Good morning. We are reconvening 23-0381, ordinance of estimate for June 30th, 2024. We are here with the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services. I would like to recognize, well, I'm Danielle McCray. I'm Chair of the Committee. We also have Councilwoman Felicia Porter, Vice President Sharon Green Middleton, Councilman Mark Conway, and Councilman Christopher Burnett with us today. Also joined by, also joined by our committee staff as well. And we're just going to go ahead and get started. Director Augustine, can you introduce yourself and also just your staff?
Can you hear me now? Good morning. I'm Irene Augustine, the Director in the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services. And today I'm joined here with Diamond Okojie. Did I say that right?
Okojie.
Okojie, who is our Fiscal Administrator. Ade Adeniji, who is our Director of Programs. Behind me is Lissandra Jackson, who is our Homeless Management Information Systems Manager. Camille Watney and Peroma Nandi are with our Policy and Planning Division. And so that is our staff in the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services.
Okay. And I just want to let you guys know we have some new technology in the chamber. So hit your mic on the right-hand side, the little person. When you see the red flash, you are good to go and we'll be able to hear you. At this time, Director, we can start with your presentation.
Good morning, and thank you for, to the City Council members of the Ways and Means Committee. As I said before, I am Irene Augustine, the Director of the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services, and I will be presenting our FY '24 budget. The mission of the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services is to make homelessness rare, brief, and non-recurring in Baltimore City. We believe that homelessness is both solvable and preventable. With a person-centered and data-driven approach, we meet the immediate needs of our neighbors experiencing homelessness while pursuing their ultimate goal of obtaining safe, affordable housing. When I became Director of MOHS two years ago, I was tasked to create a strategic investment plan that in its foundation had intentional community engagement and the voices of people with lived experiences. Not only did we have two leading national experts supporting us through this process, but also local consultants who represented people with lived experience. Anthony Williams was one of our lived experience consultants, and sadly, he passed away a month ago. Anthony experienced homelessness at a young age and cycled in and out of homelessness during his lifetime. He was born in Baltimore and loved his hometown. He served as co-chair of the Journey Home, Baltimore City's Continuum of Care, served on the Affordable Housing Commission, and an active participant with many causes. When Anthony passed, he was housed and recently purchased a car. He is missed by so many in the community, but his legacy will live on as we work together to end homelessness. The Strategic Investment Plan was published in March 2022. The Leadership Committee on Homelessness and Housing, co-led by myself and Commissioner Alice Kennedy, and the Department of Housing and Community Development, was created to implement the plan. Anthony, along with other individuals that represented other city departments, nonprofits, healthcare, academia, the business community, and people with lived experience, continued this work. As we know, setting goals are essential to any plan. In 2022, Mayor Scott signed on to House America, a national campaign supported by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and the United States Interagency Council on Homelessness, to set rehousing and housing creation goals. Our goal was to rehouse 1,000 households experiencing homelessness by the end of the year. We exceeded the goal and housed 1,443 households. Our housing creation goal was to add 1,600 new housing units of affordable housing into the development pipeline. At the end of 2022, we added 2,528 new affordable units to the pipeline. Housing ends homelessness, but it requires balance and strategic allocation of resources between triage and housing. MOHS's budget supports the major components of Baltimore City's homelessness response system, which includes prevention, outreach, temporary housing, or also known as emergency shelter, and permanent housing. While MOHS provides direct services or contracts, we also collaborate with other city departments and providers to ensure that their clients are connected to housing and/or support services and that we are maximizing scarce resources and are not duplicating services. MOHS administers the federal, state, and local funding that is awarded to the City of Baltimore to address homelessness. General fund support for administration is used as match, which is required to receive state and federal funding support. The agency contracts with nearly 40 local service providers. MOHS coordinates the city's application for federal continuum of care funding and manages all reporting and monitoring requirements for COC, which is Continuum of Care, Emergency Solution Grant, housing opportunities for people with age, also known as HAPWA, and other state grants. The agency's homeless management information system compiles data on services provided and supports over 300 users and is used to monitor program and systems outcome. Four additional positions in the agency were requested and approved following the adoption of the fiscal 2023 budget. The recommended budget funds two general fund positions to support the emergency services and outreach teams that engage in direct services and two federally funded positions that work on youth homelessness and programmatic operations on outreach and sheltering. Prevention Services assists individuals who are dealing with the housing crisis and are at risk of becoming homeless. The goal is to provide services and/or financial resources necessary to prevent a person from moving into an emergency shelter or place not meant for human habitation. The key activities include financial assistance, housing relocation case management, financial counseling, financial literacy, landlord mediation, eviction prevention, and other direct services for households at imminent risk of eviction. To end homelessness requires that we slow inflow to emergency shelter. MOHS receives ARPA support for flexible fund to divert households from going into shelter and provide rapid resolution so that their stay in shelter is brief. While we have seen a reduction also in first-time homelessness over the last three fiscal years, we are monitoring this very closely and working in coordination with other partners who provide prevention services so that we can help those in need. The next service area is around outreach to the homeless. Street outreach services are provided to Baltimore City's unsheltered homeless population. This is people living in places not meant for human habitation, such as outdoors, in cars, in abandoned buildings, et cetera. The Mayor's Office of Homeless Services directly operates and funds other providers to perform street outreach services. Tracking engagement outputs has been the focus during the public health crisis. MOHS is restructuring outreach to focus on connections to housing. Individuals who are unsheltered, especially those considered chronically homeless, may never accept a referral to shelter for a variety of reasons, such as past trauma from their time in shelter, they don't like the rules, et cetera. Shelter should not be a requirement to connect to housing, and the outreach restructure focuses on housing first. Additionally, we are working on addressing encampments. This requires that we coordinate with various city departments. It's critical to not, to have not only a thoughtful and trauma-informed approach to addressing encampments, but one that is focused on connecting to permanent housing. The next service area is around temporary housing for the homeless. Temporary housing, also known as emergency shelter, provides short-term overnight housing assistance for people experiencing homelessness. This service is provided at shelters, safe havens, transitional housing, and through the city's winter shelter program. The city funds a total of eight emergency shelters across the city, including shelters which specifically serve families, unaccompanied homeless youth, and households fleeing intimate partner violence. Funding for the shelter contracts increased by 1.4 million in fiscal 2023 from 9.3 million to 10.6 million in fiscal year 2024. This increase will stabilize funding for shelter operations that was previously funded by state and federal funds carried forward from prior fiscal years. The recommended funding levels will support 748 year-round shelter beds and 210 winter overflow beds. The city plans ARPA funds to purchase hotels that will continue to operate as non-congregate shelter and replace 275 beds that were formerly operating as congregate shelter. Additionally, we are working with the COC, improving outflow. To reach functional zero means that we are outflowing people to permanent housing faster than they inflow into the system. This is why prevention services and permanent housing are essential to efficient and effective homelessness response system. This is also critically important to ensure that our shelter capacity helps people who have nowhere else to go. And the last service area is on permanent housing for the homeless. To end homelessness means that we are connecting people to permanent housing. Two prominent housing types that are administered and provide medium-to-long-term housing assistance with supportive services are, first, rapid rehousing. Rapid rehousing programs provide up to 24 months of rental assistance and case management. The second type is permanent supportive housing, and this focuses on serving chronically homeless and highly vulnerable households who have complex and serious ongoing health needs. Rental assistance and intense case management services are provided for as long as a household needs assistance. Increasing access to affordable housing is critical to this service area. This is clearly outlined in the Strategic Investment Plan, and two of our five ARPA projects, the Housing Accelerator Fund and Housing Navigation and Landlord Engagement, are focused on increasing access to affordable housing. In addition to increasing affordable housing stock, increasing funding support for support services is essential. In 2019, the City of Baltimore, MOHS, healthcare for the homeless, and local hospitals joined forces at the intersection of housing and healthcare to end homelessness and improve the health and well-being for 200 of our most vulnerable citizens. This project is called the Assistance in Community Integration, which was authorized by the Center for Medicare and Medicaid Services, that provides housing and tenancy-based case management services to eligible Medicaid beneficiaries. In the first round, we saw stability rate of 96%, a 54% reduction in avoidable hospital visits and readmissions, and reported over half a million in healthcare cost savings. The state renewed ACES and extended it for another five years, and Baltimore City was granted an increase of 100 additional households. Our hope is that this demonstration project will be a permanent expansion of Medicaid. System change is not easy, but I know we are making progress, and it makes a difference. It made a difference for Colin Williams, an artist who was experiencing homelessness in Druid Hill Park. Colin ended his homelessness and now is housed. He shared his story with the Baltimore Banner. And Renee Lau, who experienced homelessness after suffering job loss, battling cancer, and undergoing her gender transition. She now works at Baltimore Safe Haven, helping trans individuals find housing, and she shared her story as we hit a major milestone in House America. But there are hundreds of stories we do not hear, but the people are there. They are our neighbors, and they matter. 10 minutes is not a lot of time to cover it, but I hope I was able to convey the tremendous amount of work that is being done to reduce and end homelessness in Baltimore City. I am happy to answer any of your questions.
Director Augustine, I think you did a great, a great job. We also want to thank you for your leadership in leading your agency. Thanks to all of your team members. I'm going to stick to what I was about to say next, but I appreciate you, and I know that my colleagues do as well. Just to set expectations for our colleagues, we're going to do our best to be brief but comprehensive. We have less than an hour at this point before this, this particular hearing ends. We are doing one question, one follow-up, if you have one. One question, one follow-up. We're going to start with, and actually, let me get some names in here since from when we started. I want to thank our Council President, Nick Mosby, Nicholas Mosby, for joining us today. I also want to thank Councilmember Robert Stokes, who is here at this time, Councilmember Ron Dorsey, who also joined, and Councilman Torrance, who joined. And at this time, we're going to go to Council President Mosby and also our Chair, Eric Costello. We're going to go to our Council President, Nick Mosby, at this time, for any questions that he, that he may have.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Director. Just real quick, could you give us a quick overview of where we are with ARPA dollars in the process of procuring a hotel?
Sure. So, as you may recall, MOHS was awarded 75 million, which supports five projects, which, when we applied for the ARPA funding, we used our Strategic Investment Plan, which identified 10 critical investment areas and applied for six of those. And so, as you probably are well aware, that, you know, it did take some time in terms of being able to get these projects up and going. We've been closely working with the Office of Recovery Programs to make sure that, you know, one, not only are we excited to implement these projects, but we want to make sure that we're in total compliance with federal regulation. And so, our partnership with the Office of Recovery Programs is important. Right now, we have three of the five programs under an agreement letter, which we are, one, we awarded seven contracts, which is the project around shelter demobilization and added rapid rehousing. We have contracts for seven providers. That did take a little longer to get up and going. We've done rapid rehousing before, but we wanted to make sure that we instituted new standards to ensure that when we implement rapid rehousing, that it's truly rapid. And so, we onboarded some new providers to our system, which, in order for us to build capacity, you know, we wanted to make sure that we opened this opportunity to other providers. But it did take some time to get that program up and going. They are leasing to individuals now, and we're working to continue that, for all programs to lease up in that. In terms of the other projects around housing navigation and landlord engagement, we've hired four of the five housing navigators. We've partnered with Enoch Pratt Library. We wanted to make sure they were embedded in our community and that there was access to them as well. They started this month, and so, I know that they've met so far with 75 individuals and working with them to do diversion, coordinated access, and to make sure that they're supporting them in terms of their housing journey. In terms of landlord engagement and recruitment, that will roll out in the next few weeks. In terms of a centralized platform for affordable housing that we're putting together, I'm a social worker, so I know how hard it is to work with individuals. I also know how hard it is to find available units. So, we're hoping that this centralized platform for affordable housing not only helps to find housing, but quickens our ability to do that. And then, in terms of the Flex Fund, we need a diversity of resources in our community. Some people don't need long-term assistance like rapid rehousing or permanent supportive housing. Maybe they just need some one-time help. And so, it's important that we have short-term, medium-term, and long-term that will also roll out in the next few weeks. And then, before I get to the hotels, which I'm going to leave for last, which I know you're waiting to hear, the last one is the Housing Accelerator Fund. As outlined in the Strategic Investment Plan, access to safe, affordable housing is critically important. MOHS has been working with DHCD to roll out the Housing Accelerator Fund, and we hope to have RFPs go out this summer. And really, it's to grow that pipeline of affordable housing and permanent supportive housing within our community. In terms of hotels, we are working to identify, really, the replacement hotels to the 275 units of what used to be congregate shelter to be replaced with non-congregate shelter. And so, I don't want to share too much because we are in negotiations for one hotel, but really, the idea is to fulfill that request of replacing 275 units. The reality is, there really isn't a hotel in our community that has that many units to put it all in one place, so it would have to be multiple hotels. But we want to make sure, because this is a big investment for the City of Baltimore, that we are doing our due diligence to not only make sure we're getting the best price for that because it is an acquisition, but also to ensure that it's close to amenities such as transportation, other services. And ultimately, the reason, and I said this last year, and I think probably the year before, the reason why I'm very interested in hotels is its ultimate conversion into permanent housing. And so, as we get better as a community in terms of housing individuals that are experiencing homelessness, really, that end goal is to increasing affordable housing within our community. And with these assets, I can see that happen. It's happening in other states, and I can very much see that happen in Baltimore as well.
Well, can community be involved with the selection or the operations of the hotel?
And so, we-
I just say, I say that just from a council perspective. You know, obviously, it'll be our constituents, business owners, or as well as residential constituents, that would definitely be interested if this was to occur. So, what's the process of, like, engaging the council and ultimately engaging the community?
And I would say that this is not just an MOHS decision, this is a city decision. And we've partnered with other departments within the city, obviously, Office of Recovery Programs, the Real Estate Division, the Mayor's Office. One, in terms of hotels itself, you know, while we have hotels within our community, ones that really fit what we need to have it do in terms of provide emergency shelter is very specific. And so, we've, are contracted with Lazar Strategies, which are consultants. They've worked on a number of hotel opportunities, and so, they're helping to lead us through this process and to make sure we're documenting everything, that we're doing our due diligence. We're also learning from their best practices to make sure that we're making the wisest decision. In terms of including the community, we know that with any acquisition, especially when it comes to serving people experiencing homelessness, it does require us to involve the community because we are going to be embedded in a community, and so, it's important to have those conversations. At this point, we're looking at what options are viable to us, and so, obviously, I'm not going to go, and I don't want to jeopardize any negotiations. But I also am well aware of, you know, that these aren't hotels that are plentiful within Baltimore, and there are specific needs that we have, and so, we're doing our due diligence to make sure that we are identifying, really, the best prospects for this. And so, as we go further down the road with this, it will, we will incorporate the community. The COC, in terms of shelter standards, is already working on that, and they were also part of the Strategic Investment Plan work that we did because we wanted to make sure we had community engagement and involvement, especially with people with lived experiences. And so, from the onset of the plan, that was a part of it and will continue to be an important part.
Is the councilperson who will be impacted by this plan been notified?
At this point, because it's in negotiations, until we are closer to maybe a viable option, we haven't shared that with the council member yet.
Yeah, I would just ask you to pass back to the administration that this is the type of information that the council and the administration should be on one accord. You know, obviously, I, I think that, you know, if, for time-sensitive as well as detail-sensitive information, you know, it's definitely important to ensure we do it in the most appropriate fashion. But I think, you know, I serve with 14 professionals that will understand and know the sensitivity of it. The problem is, when information like this gets out to the media, as it normally does from the administration, the council finds out through the media, it becomes extremely problematic, particularly as it relates to the community. So, if you could just pass back to the administration that, you know, it would be my expectation that the administration would rope in the councilperson that's impacted, as well as myself, sooner rather than later, just so we can be ahead of the information as well.
Okay, understood.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I want to acknowledge Councilman Balak. See, are you okay? Okay. We're going to go to Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. President, for just bringing that up. I know I have one question, but I just had a flashback of when that emergency shelter was put at Greenspring Middle School on Greenspring in the middle of five communities and all residential area. And it was a challenge just really educating the public, and it gave me, I think it gave all of us a chance to understand how the public really needs to be educated about homelessness and reminder that homeless people are individuals as well, and any of us could be in that situation at any given amount of time, and how important the partnerships should, is just so important. So, and again, thank you, Madam Director, for, you know, your expertise and your consistent responsiveness to our offices. My question is, I guess, just to elaborate a little more, you know, in the residential areas, particularly the, the business, small business sections that we have in the outskirts of, you know, Fifth, Sixth, Seventh, Eighth, Ninth, and I could go on, not directly downtown, I see homeless people, like, camping out right at a small business, and of course, the businesses consistently call the police. They refuse to leave that camp. Outreach worker will come and remove them temporarily, take them to the hospital, but they end up right back in the same place, and it's just a consistent back and forth. Is there a plan to try to figure out how to really get this person from the beginning and not continually just go through this back and forth process? And I think part of that is where our longstanding partnerships can come into play that can kind of help with that problem. Your comments?
Thank you, Councilwoman. I would want to first say that I think the issues you bring up are not only seen in Baltimore, but seen across the nation. And part of that is really having, you know, all sectors, all individuals, really understand what it takes to help someone experiencing homelessness to end their homelessness. And so, I have the pleasure, since coming to Baltimore and working for the city, to be really involved with other city departments. I know that our partnership with the Department of Housing and Community Development is essential because I can get rental assistance, but if I don't have safe, affordable housing to direct people to, really, we're going to see, we're going to see the issue persist. The same goes with people that are dealing with medical, mental health, and behavioral health issues. It is so important that my office is partnering with healthcare, mental health, behavioral health providers. We can help get people into housing, but they still will need the support services once they're in there. And the one thing that I think a lot of people get really confused about is that a lot of times, people think, oh, it's mental health, or it's behavioral health. times, people think, oh, it's mental health, or it's behavioral health that leads people to homelessness, but it isn't. A lot of it's economics. They lose a job, they have medical bills pile up, and they find themselves in some sort of housing crisis. When you're in a consistent crisis, you find different ways to cope. And sometimes, that's when mental health and behavioral health issues become greater, and you try to self-cope with either substances or other risky behaviors because it's much easier sometimes to cope that way than to address some issues, or maybe the system's not easy enough to do that. And so part of the work that we're doing at MOHS requires we're partnering with so many departments within the city. We partner with DHCD, we're working with BHSB, sorry, I shouldn't use acronyms, the Behavioral Health Systems Baltimore. And it's important that we partner with them because they also fund some outreach. But the conversations we're having is, okay, what are we really good at? And how can we really focus and be successful for MOHS? That's on the housing piece. How can we better connect to people on the behavioral health side? The issue that you've brought up, and I know I've worked with other council members on this, is that our outreach team goes out. We do an emergency petition because someone's at risk to themselves or to others, and then they go to the hospital. And then sometimes, we see them back right where they started because the hospital, and maybe at the time that they presented, didn't have issues that warrant them to be admitted. And so those are conversations that we have to have with our healthcare system, which we're having. But it does take time to coordinate that. I think we're making progress on that. It's great to see the 10 hospitals in our community really supporting the ACES program. They understand tenancy case management and how important it is, and it's leading to conversations about how do we help on the emergency shelter side. And so there's talks even with our healthcare system around medical respite. I think the biggest part, aside from the partnerships, is also working with our partners to map out our services. And this is important because, like I said, I'm a social worker. If I don't understand it, how am I expected to explain it to someone experiencing homelessness? And how do I expect someone experiencing homelessness to understand how do I actually get help? And so it's really in our conversations, we're having tough conversations. It's hard to face challenges and shortfalls in our system, but we're doing it because we want our system to be better. And so in the coming year, you will see a lot of work come out of MOHS and our continuum of care. We are focused on instituting case conferencing, which means that people experiencing homelessness through our Coordinated Access Program, we have what we call a by-name list. And in that by-name list, we're really truly understanding what it takes to get someone housed, and we're doing it very much at that individual level with our service providers. And then we're taking that a step further because as we start to see systems trends, we can elevate that to our COC so that we can address some system barriers and bring other partners to the table if we see barriers from that aspect. And so we're helping to coordinate that. I will say, it is not easy, and I think many of you who work with the community know how hard it is to move things forward, but because we are seeing people get housed, it re-energizes us to get more people housed, and so they're committed coming every week to the table to figure out how to get someone through their housing journey.
Thank you so much, Director. We are going to-
Just a quick request.
Okay.
Thank you so much for that update. I'd like to request if we could just have friendly quarterly updates at our council luncheon of what's going on with, you know, you gave a wonderful outline, detailed outline, and I think it's important if we at least get quarterly updates of this at our luncheons, and if there's some immediate problems that we all can talk about at that time, too, at least that'd be on the forefront instead of once a year. So that's my possible request. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Colleagues, we have about 24 minutes, so just a quick reminder, brief but comprehensive, that's also going to be for our agency representatives as well. We're going to move on to Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Real quick, I had, Anthony Williams was always at the Starbucks on Ashland Avenue, so I had a lot of comments with that guy. He was great. He was actually the face of homelessness here in the city. To come from that point and have his right mind and have his own place, plenty of conversation. I told him he had to tell his story, so he could be missed, but we can't let his name just disappear. We need to do something and honor him because he did a, he's done a lot in the city in terms of watching somebody go from homeless to independent, to have his right state of his mind and trauma, and it actually happened. We can't just let that go away. My question is, we want to put our homeless people into hotels. Rich from global generosity, I fought for that be over here by Healthcare for the Homeless. The only money he ever got was from the CARES Act. You know how much dignity he gave homeless people? They could take a shower, take a bath, get some clothes, five of them got jobs. He left because we can't even find funding for his program. We should be ashamed of ourselves. He got money from CARES Act, CLAD, whatever it is, the federal money. No more money, he's gone. Why are we not making sure that that facility that really gave homeless people dignity in this city, he shouldn't have never have to leave to say he can't have no money? We should be ashamed of ourselves. So why are we talking about putting people in a hotel? People need to take a bath. Everybody feeds you, but they got to go to the bathroom also. So when are we going to address that? And my request is, in the budget, we need to talk to Rich and talk about getting him funding so he can bring that facility back over here at Healthcare for the Homeless. Because you know why? Nobody wanted in their neighborhood, but everybody wants you to help a homeless person. We fought to get it there. We, Gay Street, nobody wanted, all over the place. We end up over there with it, and he did a great job over there. So I'm saying, in the budget, we need to look at and sit down with Rich and talk about how we can get funding for that program that really work in the city. Because I'm going to finish, Madam Chair. Everybody feed them, but they have to use the bathroom. They have to take a shower. They have to take a bath. They got to have some dignity, and to let that go, we should be ashamed of ourselves. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Councilman Stokes. We're going to go to Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So just sort of a broader question about, I guess, service providers. We, our office, met with your predecessor a while back because we received a number of complaints about tenants facing eviction due to, it sounds like some financial mismanagement of Ryan White funding. Can you speak to, I guess, the, I guess, oversight and accountability mechanisms in place to ensure that that kind of thing doesn't happen? And, you know, this is sort of, when we were navigating this in my office, it was at the peak of the pandemic, we already had a lot of, you know, financial stress on the rental assistance system overall, and then sort of seeing this come into play was a little bit shocking at the time. Can you speak to, I guess, how something like that can happen with oversight and accountability mechanisms exist to ensure that our nonprofit partners are not, you know, wasting dollars at a time where we know that, you know, there are very few resources available generally for an house?
Sure. And so I want to first say that because the need is so high in our community, I don't want to see any single penny go and not be used. I can't speak for my predecessor, but I know the effects of the agency that you're speaking of, we're still dealing with today. Unfortunately, you know, we did catch the fact that there were issues in some breach with their contracts, which forced us to move forward with terminating that contract. But the issue doesn't go away when you terminate the contract. There are real lives at stake, and I know that my office has been working also with partner agencies and with HUD, and we had to figure out what, how to help 450 households that were impacted by this. I don't ever want to go through that again because, one, it's hard to figure out how internally within our department we get those resources because we do not want to see one single person get displaced. But the other side of this is that it's so stressful on the clients themselves to not know really the status, and they thought they can, you know, get help from that agency and not hear anything from them. So we quickly really, you know, picked up the pieces there. To ensure that it doesn't happen again, you know, one of the things that I was very aware when I first came as director was making sure that my office is in full compliance with HUD regulations. I would say that I've been working with this ever since I started, and we continue to make progress in it. We've worked with HUD TA to create what we're calling standard operating procedures. I think one of the things that we know as an office, because we're the grantee for these federal and state funds that come to our office, we are also required to monitor those. But it really comes back to, is our contracts compliant with the HUD regulations? So we've done overhaul administratively to make sure, one, we understand the regulations, two, that our providers understand the regulations and what's required of them through their contract, and that we continue to monitor not only spend down, but really the performance of the programs. And as we continue to monitor those really proactively, my hope is we don't encounter the severity of that nonprofit's issues that we're still dealing with today. It is not something that I ever want to see my office or Baltimore or the massive amount of households that were impacted of this, and so we're doing everything possible to prevent that.
Thank you.
Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I have a very direct request and then one question. For my direct request, I'm going to put this in writing so I'm real clear about it. I would like to know the number of permanent supportive housing positions that have increased in the city since the beginning of 2021, and the total cost and funding sources for those positions, any program that you can say, you know, this many go in this program, this many are in this program, a programmatic breakdown that way?
Councilwoman, when you say positions, are you meaning staff?
Units. No, I mean permanent supportive housing units allocation. What is the word that you use?
Units.
Units, okay, thank you. And if this falls under the description you gave that says rental assistance exists for as long as the household needs assistance, if that is what this actually means. That's my request. For my question, you said that-
Councilman, give me a second.
Sure.
Do you have a timeline that you, a reasonable timeline for this request?
By the end of the month, if I could, please.
Is that something that you guys are able to do?
Yes, we can pull together the units and the costs because that's all included in the COC contracts.
Okay.
And you'd want it for-
The end of the month.
No, for this past funding year or this current one?
Since the beginning of 2021.
Okay.
You know, the increase that has happened.
Okay.
And I will follow up with an email to make sure we're all on the same page about this. Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is, you said that homeless outreach includes people residing in abandoned housing. We also have people who squat in houses that aren't necessarily abandoned, but are, particularly in Northeast Baltimore, have this issue of houses that are in some state of foreclosure where for extended periods, we have it kind of in bank hands or often in like investment firm hands, and they're not taking proactive measures to actually close the foreclosure, and this can go on for months and sometimes years at a time. And I have to assume that if these people were not squatting in these houses, that they would otherwise be homeless, and they're not, but they're still not exactly abandoned houses. Is this part of the outreach effort? And if not, what do we do to better coordinate that when I get constituent emails about people squatting in houses?
Sure. So yes, outreach has responded to people in abandoned buildings. However, that request comes from DHCD. Because, one, they're dealing with those actual units and squatting, so they check it out first, and then they call MOHS and to assist if needed. And so if you have a constituent that has a concern about, you know, an abandoned building and someone potentially living in it, your first call would be to DHCD. We technically will not enter in a building until DHCD has gone out and assessed the situation. It's a safety issue for my staff.
But beyond abandoned buildings, we don't, I don't think that we categorize like a house that is like legally deeded and all this, it's not-
You still would go through DHCD because they're looking on, into the building side of it and then calling us in. If it's public property, you know, sometimes even if it's, they're unsure, you can still call us. We may direct it to DHCD, but we partner with them.
And so if DHCD is aware of the issue, and we have like some recognition of the, you know, whatever financial legal status of the building that's in this kind of, you know, foreclosure kind of state, will MOHS go to confront, not confront, I don't mean be confrontational, engage, thank you, the residents about relocation and finding actual housing circumstances that are not squatting?
Yes, we have. We've done that. We've, sometimes it's unsure of what the status is, of where they're at, so we've gone out, but if, once we understand, we pull DHCD. So it's definitely a partnership between us and DHCD.
Okay. Yeah, these are all-
Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Councilman Conway.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Director, appreciate the work you're doing. Let me speak up because I've been not speaking up lately. Appreciate the work you're doing. Just a quick question, you guys got $75 million in ARPA funding. How much of that have we spent so far?
So I don't know where MARP is, but we've had a slow start in terms of spending it. I think we're at about 0.3%, but we have projects launching in the next month or two, which, you know, we should see that funding really ramping up in terms of spending it. Like I said, it took a little bit longer to launch these programs. We appreciate Officer Recovery Programs being very thorough because the last thing I want to do is to have to go back and potentially return money, so I appreciate their due diligence and guidance with it. You know, the other reality is new programming isn't something that ramps up right away either. It is learning new initiatives. It's really understanding how to launch these programs. However, I'm very excited for the launch of these, and I think they will be a game changer for our community.
I appreciate that. How much of that money is earmarked for the hotel?
So about $45 million is earmarked for the hotel. Again, there's a lot that goes into negotiating that, and so we wanted to make sure it adequately covered the cost of that. However, if there's funding potentially left over, there is no shortage of need, especially it's outlined in our Strategic Investment Plan. And so, you know, my background before coming to the public sector was fundraising, so I'm always thinking about how do we make sure we're spending all the money that we have and can help our mission.
And that $45 million presumably would not just be one hotel if we could have it our way, potentially two?
Definitely would support multiple hotels.
Okay.
So, but again, there's a lot that goes into that decision. We need to, one, make sure it's the right investment for our community, and, two, that it's, you know, kind of checks our boxes in terms of an adequate facility to serve people experiencing homelessness.
And for operating funds for the hotel, is that coming out of the ARPA funding, or is it coming from general funds?
We, so operating in terms of the building itself came out of the ARPA funding. We already have services earmarked through our federal- We already have services earmarked through our federal funding and general fund, which goes to support those services.
Thank you, Director. We are going to, and thank you, Councilman Conway, we are going to go to Councilman Torrance at this time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Director, I just have a request. I would like to know all outstanding payments owed to landlords who are receiving assistance for persons who are experiencing homelessness. I count in email right now an unpaid invoice of $98,000, and additional one of another $101,000. I just want to make sure that we're clear, because you mentioned that we don't want people to have that pressure on them, but when landlords are owed money, there's only one other resort they're going to lean to, and that's eviction, and we want to avoid that for those persons. So I would like, as my committee request, Madam Chair, all outstanding payments due to landlords, in that it's for fiscal year '21 and '22, because I think you have not resolved your contract with HUD yet for fiscal year '22. Is that correct?
So the first thing that I do want to say is that it's the provider's responsibility to pay the landlords. So to get all the back payments with all the landlords for our COC programs will be, will take some considerable time to get with the providers to provide that information to be able to provide that to you. And so I can definitely provide it in terms of us paying the provider, and if there's lateness in that, and where the, where that's happening. But in terms of paying the landlords, that's not information, it's going to take time to collect that information in terms of the COC projects.
So Madam Chair, I'd like to see both, and I will give you until October 1st to reduce the specific providers, because you have to close out for the fiscal, fiscal year for the federal government. So I'll give you that much time to get that. But in terms of our actual payments, I would like to see that right away, by no later than July 30th.
Okay.
Give me, give me that last date again, please.
So the first...
July, July, no, I got October 1st for that one. What was the last one?
July 30th is for our payments to the actual providers, and what is, what was late, what was on time, and total outstanding.
Okay. Thank you. Councilwoman Porter.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Cleanliness within our encampments is a huge, huge issue that in South Baltimore, we experience. We have about a three to five mile encampment within Brooklyn that my office has coordinated on a number of occasions with service providers, with DPW, to clean that particular encampment. Can you speak to how your office kind of supplements that? I know that there are some coordination efforts that are needed, but that should essentially be MOHS coordinating those efforts with service providers, people on the ground that are actually doing the work, providing, you know, coordinating with DPW and things of that nature. And I was looking at, you know, the budget book and also your lineups within the budget, and I can't seem to find anywhere where that assistance and/or funding is allocated to the cleaning of the encampments. Thank you.
So in terms of what resources we commit to helping to, I would say, clean encampments, really, our focus for, first and foremost, is really to house individuals. And so in terms of being able to engage them, we help coordinate the cleanups and provide the staffing to do that. In terms of providing the actual cleanup, aside from providing trash bags, DPW has a contract with biohazard and waste and supports, I'm not sure where the funding comes from from that. I would say, you know, as we continue to look at public spaces and to look at working towards addressing encampment, because honestly, people should not be living in places not meant for human habitation, they should be in housing, and ultimately, to stop encampments means we're more successful in getting people into housing. You know, because if we, one, MOHS really doesn't have the budget to support the ongoing cleaning. We can help with the coordination, but, you know, it's going to be really a resource community-wide that, you know, if we don't address the long term as well as address the short term, like, it's just going to be a bottomless pit that we're going to continue to have to fill. And so we don't, at this point, haven't allocated anything towards DPW to do that, but we do partner with them and help with the coordination and help with the engagement with the individuals on the cleanup.
Thank you so much, Director, for that response. But with all due respect and decorum, the coordination from the office is not happening, and I just really want to know why. You just stated that, you know, you all coordinate with agencies for the cleaning of the encampments, and I'm just not seeing that. And so do you have an idea when was the last encampment that you cleaned, what that coordination effort looked like? And we don't have to talk about it now, but I'm wondering if there can be some sort of huddle with CAO Leach to determine what those coordination efforts look like? And also, you know, who is the, and this is something that I mentioned when we had our conversation about cleaning of an encampment within the Berry Circle community, who is the DRI to coordinate those efforts? Who is the lead agency that's coordinating those efforts? And so I assume, based on your mission, that it should be MOHS, but I haven't gotten a clear answer on that, and so I look forward to that continued discussion. Thank you.
And thank you to the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services. We appreciate you, we appreciate your team. We are officially in recess until 12:30, where we will be back with the Board of Municipal Zoning Appeals, BMZA. Thank you.